Pardies for the delay backup and running. Okay. Uh so the so we got a number of uh a lot of feedback to. Why are we doing this? And so I went to add a number of kind of I'll call background slides. From a state level and then some specific housing. Market uh feedback related to Wakefield in particular. Um so those are really the only the only slides that I added to this as well as. I at towards the end, I I added a kind of a place with our slide for I'll call frequently asked questions. Which I'd love to get some feedback from other folks, whether or not there's maybe you see some merit and then what would be the. Frequently asked questions we want to put on here. So if you all can see, so. My proposal to go to edit this is to still have the the multifamily district summary. But then add a handful of kind of state housing market, the background in terms of. You know, and this is, this is a graph from a Boston Globe editorial earlier this year. Uh and some information as it relates to permitting from the Greater Boston. Uh report card, uh housing report card from twenty twenty three by the Boston Foundation. Um basically nineteen ninety, you're at median house in in Massachusetts was. Uh one hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. And now today it's six hundred and forty two thousand dollars. So now the, you know, the median house is, you know, almost four times. In price from in, you know, the last thirty years. And that, you know, Massachusetts permits half of the average of US states. Or half the number of permits per um household as you know, the average US state. And we ran forty first in permitting from a rate perspective in twenty twenty two. Then go into, you know. What are some of the impacts of these increasing costs and the fact that we had no new supply? You know, Greater Boston is from net internal migration, you know, we're starting to lose more people. That we're gaining. So Greater Boston lost, you know, almost fifty thousand people in twenty twenty one. And you know, you can see the trends are not in our favor based on the graph of, you know, what the. People leaving versus entering Greater Boston are over, you know, since twenty two thousand seven all the way to twenty one. You know, and what does that mean for us in particular in Wakefield? You know, the median house cost, if you're looking at Redfin data from. October twenty eighteen to October twenty twenty three, you know, houses have increased, you know, thirty five percent. In prices, you know, a healthy vacancy rate for. Uh for homes is, you know, between five and eight percent. And you know, Wakefield, our housing vacancy rate down at, you know, sub four. So lower vacancy rates, you know, indicate we have a tight housing market. And there's challenges in terms of housing turnover and cost increases. And you know, if you look at Redfin, they can rate us as, you know, a ninety in terms of their competitive score. Um and that, you know, it's, as everyone knows, housing is tight in this market.
Jim, do you know if that vacancy rate and uh include the three point seven includes? Like the new apartments and stuff, because I think I've heard a lot at least. Oh, all these new units are empty. I don't think you see it when you drive by things like Harvard Mills and all the lights on and the people walking outside. But that seems to be. A point I've heard.
Yeah.
It's zoning board quite a bit.
Yeah, so the that is from the Wakefield Housing Forum, which I believe that data is a little, you know, twenty twenty one ish.
But it would include, it would like. At least as of then, it would include apartments too.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
That's my understanding. Um and you know, that's probably a good question to double check with Aaron, because she's. She got a lot of information from the fa- housing forum. Uh so she knows a little in terms of that that specific number a little bit better, but I'll double check.
Simply because we've got that, well, they're building these and they're all empty. And it totally, I don't see it and I don't know where they're getting it, but I don't. You know, if we have data, it'd be great. If not. It's fine.
Yeah, I've heard that as well. Um, so my intent would be to add those three slides. It's kind of like a general context. And then go into, you know, the what we looked up pre or what we looked at before, where the existing permitting process. What if Wakefield doesn't comply? The actual district requirements. Zoning in Wakefield today. The district that we're proposing. Overlay of the existing zoning versus what we're proposing. The dimensional requirements. Some of these precedent slides. Example development. Development context, I'll probably add that number that Aaron just gave in terms of the average lot size. Because I think that's useful information on this. Um. And then. The, you know, the reasons for the proposed district. And you know, talking about the statewide, you know, kind of reminding people of the the housing and then why we centered it the way we did.
So Jim, on this, I just had a thought. I don't know if it's for additions to the slide or just talking track. And it's probably in in this area, reasons for the proposed district. A lot of. As you know, a lot of the points have been, hey, you should do the minimum. Because they're forcing it upon us, you should do the minimum. Um. At least from what I'm seeing, it seems like we need to drive home that. This is what we, after spending many hours, it seemed uh to work well. And be logical, whereas if we do the minimum. It likely will move because of the way the law works with, you know. Keeping it, you know, having to have continuous uh overlay all things like that will move. Yes, we'll have minimum units, but also those units will be further away from. Our downtown where we want housing like this, and they won't help anything other than being. Neighborhoods and further from our economic centers because of that molten parking, uh not parking lot, molten park. Uh. It just seems like people to me, no matter how much you say, you know, we, this is what we thought works. Aren't understanding that the converse would be. Yes, it'll be smaller, but more of the area will be farther from our downtown. I don't know if we want to put that in here, or it's just a talk track. I just something to think about. We don't need to to hop on it now, but.
No, it's it's a really good, good point. Um.
Yeah, now we done that actually did that is something that came up. In the sustainability presentation and I explained that we were conscious on making. Years from now, when someone sees the boundaries that there's some logic on ending at streets, not mid block. So if we were to go the minimum, you'd have these weird lines and why is this half of the street included not that? So trying to have a. You know, holistic step back led us to this. Um and that seemed to satisfy some curiosity on exceeding that, you know, a little bit.
I mean, at the end of the day, I don't think it's going to change many people's minds, but for people who are truly interested, like I've I've been told a few times. I see your logic, but I don't want to do anything more than the statement of, so.
Right.
But it is helpful information for people who are like.
No, I think that makes sense. Um, the other ones, you know, is the implementations that uh schedule. You know, it's not really materially different, except for the lines change in terms of where we are in the process and some of the known meetings came off because we had them. And then the summary same more info. I had this kind of as a frequently asked questions in terms of, you know, place to put it up. I don't know if it makes sense if we want to have certain ones that we want to address or address. On the front end and then questions and answers. You know, I think the other thing that I was thinking about after going through a couple of these is, you know, I think it's helpful, you know, if I. Whoever's presenting it goes through it is helpful, but I think any of these meetings, any other. Uh I'll call backup for any other member of the working group who can, you know, chime in. It's always helpful because I think that, you know, when Greg, when you we did the ZBA together. I mean, I went through the whole presentation and you had a couple of your, I'll call your talk points. I thought that was an effective way to present it, and I think we might want to consider how that. You know, we manage that on a go forward basis, but. I'd love to get anyone's feedback in terms of if those couple slides in terms of the background makes sense and or if we think that the. Frequently asked questions, is there any particular ones that people feel makes sense that we want to add there and or, you know, have as a reference point?
There, there is one that needs to somehow be addressed because she um. Claim she's mentioned it at two um different forms, but it's the impact or the protection of historic properties. Um.
Yeah.
It was alluded to that there's a historic district.
I there's so.
There's historic properties. I can't find a district per se.
So this, I couldn't even.
Yeah.
Explain it and then we could figure out how or because we've had it come up only. Once, maybe twice. Might have been twice in my six or so years on the ZBA. There's a. Uh historic comm- historical commission, obviously, and then there's a, uh, I think the what we call it in town is this. Demolition delay by law. So the the process is they have to go in front of the, if it is on the town, if it's registered historic property, obviously, that's completely different. If it is truly a registered historic. Site. Very different. The it's almost like you could view it as levels, right? There's the then one, if it's on the town historic list, they have to go in front of the historical commission. And I I don't know the exact phrase, but say they they go in front of it to, I think, waive the demolition delay. By law, and it's a six months. And then I I think it's been twice in neither of those. Cases, the historical commission basically won't delay it, and that gives um. Really another buyer a chance to come in and say, no, we'll save this. And neither of those two that I've been on has a buyer come in and said, we'll save this. Um, one, I can't remember what the first one was, but the other one was the mansion. Um. Up on Mansion Road was.
Right.
And, you know, yes, it was historic, but it was so neglected that it didn't have a roof. It didn't have and that, you know, they, no one even came forward. To look at it. Um, so but that does not go away. That's the same. A- and as Jim said, you know, we still take credit for. The properties that aren't possi- that are possibly on our list in town, even if they're in this district. They would still have to go in front of the historical commission for anything. So I. How we want to address that.
My thought is to list how a property could be protected and the answer is it could be federal listed, state listed. Town listed, if town listed, then you have this review process. And and then just reinforce that doesn't change. And so, yes, it could lead to someone wanting to either. Remove or substantially alter historic property. But it's no different than someone wanting to alter an existing property anyways.
Hmm.
So I think that's the. We're not trying to add incentives to touch historic, but we're not. Putting additional burden. I thi- I think that's, you know, that's what we've talked about, but I I think we do need to put it in writing instead of say.
Yeah, and I believe there there's. I know that someone had mentioned that they went to. The historical commission to find information on the properties. I believe this process is right on the the historical commission's website also, wherever that list of.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Um. You know, I know that it feels like that we get a lot of questions as it relates to um. Why is they doing this? What is the minimum that we can do? How does the process actually work? Uh, and why did you pick? The sections that you picked. I feel like those are like kind of like the of like the buckets. Those are the ones I've been, I I feel like I've been answering the most or, you know. Me having the most of those conversations. I know the other people have other ones that you guys think that would make sense and or. If there's anything that you think that would be helpful in terms of trying to ask, you know. Putting in frequently asked questions, or if you think that it's easier just to do all is I'll call it talking points on in this. Presentation.
Well, if we did keep a frequently asked question, that is something that could be a separate. Um. List that's available on the website and then could be pu- you know, published. Um, another one I'd add is the impact of schools. You know, that always is people's question on. A a segment of the population. I'm looking through my notes.
Yeah, I have. I at for schools, we do have.
Oh, right, we did, yeah.
Enrollment. Um. But that's a good, that's a good point. We probably could put that. Into, you know, if he if we had FAQ on the website, then we probably could just take this. Information, put it right there.
Good point. That could be a separate document for the website, because it seems like this presentation in the appendix is already trying to answer the FAQs. If someone wanted to on their own go quickly, you know, and they don't really understand the context of each one of these. Slides without. Um. You know, a talk track, but they wanted to just quickly look at a a few high level questions that could be a smaller presentation, but I. I don't know if it helps to have it in here or just continues to. Um, put more dense information in something that really is seems to be answering these FAQs already.
Does somewhere in here we talk about that it's. It makes no distinction between condo and rental. That came up as a question and and that is an easy question is, you know, what is ownership? The answer is it can be either, but just kind of. Putting it out there as a reminder that we aren't dictating how it's used in terms of type of housing.
We did not, we, there's nothing in here related to that, but that's a good. Um, a good remembrance. Matt, I know that uh you're you you're obviously not serving on any boards or or and I don't think that you deal with any of this. Zoning professionally on the day to day. I I'd be curious to hear what you your feedback would be as um. As the person who's probably less into the weeds as than Robin, Greg and myself. You know, what what are your takeaways when we go through this? One of the things that you think are relevant questions if you're if you're coming from this, you know, semi fresh.
Sure, uh I think. It seems like you guys have a lot more experience in sort of. Uh elements of the public that are, you know, very engaged in these type of things and in the the questions that you're coming up with. That you a- anticipate hearing and probably have heard for those really engaged elements of the public are are. Pretty down there in the weeds, so so far from, you know, my perspective, who, as you said, you know, don't deal with this professionally or, you know, don't serve on any boards to deal with it on a regular basis. Um, my questions would, you know, be a little bit more high level, more about timing. Uh, and impact what the public could expect to see from this and and a rough timeline of when they could expect to see it. Obviously, the impact on schools is something that, you know, is. Uh, gonna concern a lot of people and. As well as a number of the other issues, but uh just sort of a a realistic expectation of what this is going to mean for for neighborhoods for the community and. And when, you know, it's all expected to be rolled out and in place and and. And taking place, and I know a lot of that has to do with the way the properties turn over and the interest in developing them in this multifamily way. Um, so maybe a lot of that is is, you know, pretty squishy enough. You can't really give a good answer, but. That would be what I would anticipate. Um. The main concern being of the the main. Question in sort of your average layperson member of the public's mind.
Yeah, I think that that's. A hundred percent one of the 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 first questions and a hundred percent one of the hardest questions to answer in terms of what is the. Overall impact. I think that is going to be squishy, but. It's it's not a bad observation, you know, I think. And you know, I I noticed, Robin, you're unmuted. I don't know if you have a reaction to that as well.
Well, I, yeah, I think we need to keep reminding the statement that this does not guarantee. Any changes in terms of properties, right? So there's no requirement from the state that X number of units be built by X year. Which is not true of other rules that we get from the state and I am thinking of. On Saturday, lots of talk about, you know, the twenty thirty, twenty fifty energy, you know, so this does not have any of those. Benchmarks we have to meet. We have to provide the zoning by a certain date, but then after that. It's the free market that sets when any, if and when any changes occur. Does that start to address the the concern on the the when or something?
Yeah, sure. You know, I I I sort of, you know, understand that, but uh. I think it'll be an important point to. To emphasize and and I would expect to be a a one of the most frequently asked questions. Um, so when we are going through um some more of the granular information for those people, uh, you know, members of the public who are. More engaged, more in tune with. You know, this sort of municipal governance and municipal planning process. Um, I think that it'll be important to make sure that we do hit those wave tops for the folks that, you you know, aren't as. Familiar with this, these type of processes.
Do we also in some of the presentation, answer the question about affordable housing? Because if not, the Q and A should be, you know. Does it make or prevent affordable housing or something along those lines? That came up multiple times, I think. And I guess then for affordable housing and or forty B, right?
I'm questioning. I was looking at some affordable. I think we should define affordable housing as well. I know that doesn't, I mean, I know this doesn't impact it, but I don't even think people know what they're talking about when they're saying affordable housing.
That sort of goes to to point Aaron was making earlier, that people are asking. The impact on forty B and they don't. Understand that taken at the minimum, there's only what fifty? Five or so extra units, which only means we would have to provide six more. Quote-unquote affordable units, and even at the larger, it was what around seven hundred? Um. Extra units in the worst case scenario, everything being built out, which means we'd only have to provide seventy more. Affordable units, ten percent, and our inclusionary zoning already has an eighteen percent. Um, requirement and also, like Julie probably knows better than I, but the, you know, we started an affordable housing trust and all that work we're doing there. Would 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 help us get there and. It doesn't, the denominator doesn't change until. At least twenty thirty, but more likely twenty. Thirty-two or thirty-three when they release the the new census, so we have plenty of time to actually. Make those changes.
Yeah, I think what makes sense, un- unless you guys disagree, is it probably makes sense to have like a, I'll call it a forty B slide.
Yeah.
You know, but probably put it in the in the in the backup.
Yeah.
And I can work with Aaron as it relates to.
I ask a process question now that we're thinking about the, so. We, Aaron mentioned, and I didn't understand this at first, we have to go to town council to be. Referred to the planning board before it goes to town meeting. What does that process look like? And I guess I'm coming at that question from. It seems like we'll all be sort of in agreement on the 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 language of the actual bylaw, the the most consternation. Seems to be on the extent of the overlay district. Can we? Because I want I want the planning board essentially to have as much information as possible when they're making their decision on what to actually. I guess that's a question is what are they actually voting up or down at at some point? Because can we go to the? To the town council to be referred to the planning board with, here's the bylaw and here's alternate one and alternate two. Here's what we recommend, but here's what seemingly. That has more support through the public meeting, or do we have to go with one thing? And I and I guess I re- I asked that too, because it's seen, it it. If we even go with two things, it seems like as of right now, from the last town council meeting, there may not even be support for. I guess that whole process escapes me.
I think we should get clarification on it, but I, this is just a fairly perfunctory referral to planning because planning is the. The town body that has to bring it forward. I I do not believe that, I mean, town council, we cannot, you know, we can't dictate what planning and conservation and ZVA do, right? I mean.
I guess that's that's sort of where that question was was raised from, and if we go to with two proposals. Or or with a proposal that has an alternate, one will. You know, town council vote, say, no, we're only going to send this one, or can they say, yeah, you can look at. Planning board can look at both and two, well, can we even do that? Does plan, can planning board make then make a decision? On which one to then refer to to town meeting, or do we need to come out of this with?
To be honest, Greg, I I was not, I was under the impression prior to the feedback from Aaron earlier today. That this did not have to go to town council before it went. Back to the town, or sorry, I thought I could just go to plan the planning board and then be sent via via the planning board to town council. I was unaware. Having to go back to town council, so I don't know the particularities of why that. Is a requirement, and I don't know what the. Feedback loop is as it relates to at town council, if it's or if it's just, I'll call it pro forma, it's just gonna come up, be discussed. In in a superficial way and then refer to the planning. I'm not confident I understand why it's going back to town council.
Then I guess if it does go straight to planning board, I I would think that they would be okay with us saying. You know, here's the bylaws we see it and here's our recommendation, but here's also sort of an alternative that. Um, because I I I guess at the end of the day, obviously, I want. To put forward something that, you know, can be passed, but I want the pla- planning board to have the full information in front of them that, yeah. This group recommends this, but based on what we hear, that might be tougher than. What everyone else, you know, I sort of want them to have the full information at the end of the day, if that makes sense.
I think it does, and without speaking on behalf of the planning board, um. I'm aware that, you know, because we've been doing these meetings at the planning board, public forums. There's an understanding of that there's two options that have been presented. Um. But you're right, we probably should do the circle up with them and make sure that whatever the formal mechanism is, we're not getting tripped up, so. I'll put that as a list to follow with Aaron in terms of what. What that feedback loop through town council needs to look like and make sure that we're not tripping ourselves up on process. No, it's it's a good question. Um, any other feedback as it relates to the to the presentation or things that you think that we should be? Adding in here?
No, and watching the um, the public forums, I think it has. Pretty much all, or at least most, the vast majority of the relevant information, it's. Nice to see that when someone does have a question, you're you immediately, yeah, we do have a slide on that, and pretty much. All questions, you know, I guess there's some here and there that. You know, you can't, no one expected to to get um. But on the on the vast majority of questions, eh the information seems to be here already and well thought out.
Yeah. So in that case, um. What I ask is, you know, Greg, could you send me just a quick summary of that historical process that you outline?
Yeah, I, can we not share links on this Zoom anymore? I was kind of, there's no chat function. Is that turned off? I'll just email it, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to just basically take that and be able to, you know, highlight it and, you know. Where you, it's basically exactly what you said, if I could have recorded it and just sent it for the next public forum, I would. Um, but yeah, I think that's that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, in that case, anyone else have any other, anything else on the presentation that you wanted to discuss?
So the, on the presentation, no, but that, so the next. So the presentation is presented a third time in December, is that the idea? And these meetings we've done this fall don't apply to the official hearings that are done in the spring, right? That's what we're we're learning.
Uh, so so there's a, when the planning, when a zoning bylaw. Is is presented or, you know, is uh in the process to be adopted, there has to be a public forum, but in and that. Public forum, yeah, no wait.
No, we're having public forums.
Yeah, I know, there needs to be a formal public meeting, and there's like a specific. Set of requirements as it relates to the public meeting that requires uh specific notice and. Um, has to be advertised in the local paper, and there's like a specific process associated with it. For the public meeting, and so that has to be a planning, the planning board has to do it as the body. In town that has jurisdiction over the zoning by law. And then af- you have to have at least one public meeting and before it can be referred to town council and then go to the. Uh, be put on the warrant, and I think what I'm hearing is that. Aaron got feedback from town council. Or town administrator Mayo, that he wants to have at least two formal public meetings held by the planning board. My guess is that's been reaction to the town meeting when there was a number of uh. It was feedback as it relates to the lack of public meetings for the stretch energy code by law that ended up passing. You know, obviously, I think that we would, it's slightly different because we've had so many public forums, even. You know, obviously, I think that we would, it's slightly different because we've had so many public forums, even though it's not the same as a public meeting, but I'm guessing that's. Where that's coming from.
Yeah, I was just gonna confirm with, I think that what they say at town meeting, I was, they, there was one, they held one, I mean, we've held many of these that. Um, you know, what is the, I I understand. Does, does he? Understand how many public, we've had many public forums through. Planning board. I think you guys have had two already, there's going to be another one and then this board has always been public or subcommittee has always been public and has been meeting since. I don't know, almost a year at this point. Um, since that changed and at and at the end of the day, I understand what he suggests, but what does planning board want to do?
Yeah. So I think the other thing is, you know, even before this group, there were two presentations. Actually, three presentations, I think, in town council talking about this, as well as three separate answer and question. Public forums, the planning board held. So we're up, we're get, we're pushing twenty meetings. On this already, just for public forums that are all public.
Yeah, so if it helps, I mean, I think. Understanding. Why? There is that suggestion, but. At the end of the day, if we need the timing. I think the planning board probably does have the authority to sort of do what they think is is best. Given the fact we've had. O- over twenty meetings.
Yeah, I mean, even.
That are always available on the website.
Well, I mean, in defense of the environmental committee, all our meanings and the planning of that stretch code. For public meetings and no one takes them as. An opportunity, which is weird, but um, just, and this is getting super ahead of ourselves, but I. Was a lesson from town meeting is a reminder that this presentation right now is fantastic, lots of information, but it is long. We learned at town meeting that you're given five minutes unless you request more, so we'll, we will need to take this and condense it to a town meaning. Qualifying length and and I guess you're allowed to ask for more than ten minutes, they only ask for ten minutes, but. The appendixes aren't counted, right? So if you need to say, oh, we had the other slides for it, then you can, you know, you exceed your ten minutes, but. Just thinking in the in the jumping way ahead, we will need to think about how short can it go?
Yeah, I had that exact same thought because I thought it was kind of ridiculous that they were. I thought they were uh, definitely not fair to the environment sustainability committee as it relates to the time allotment, because.
But it was the, it was the town attorney, so if anyone's going to know the minutes allowed and she said, yeah, about ten minutes, not knowing he was going to hold her to ten minutes, you know, that was.
Oh, yeah, no, I I noted that. I was like, oh, that's.
And I think part of it too is.
Ten minutes is tough.
Is making sure we do have our information down, which I think we, the, Jim, I give tons of credit for this, because when someone did ask whether meetings on this. Robin, you just said there were multiple, but the answer at the meeting was, yeah, we had one on November sixth.
We, well, we had a. Eh, we, right, it's it's a, it's the language that matters, there was.
Yeah, so I think we need to.
Zoom presentations you can go back to, we only advertise them with a special headline, but it also, like anything else, has. To go in front of town council before it gets on the warrant, so that was another opportunity someone could listen into, but if they don't consider that the agenda, then they don't count it, I mean.
No, but this is just, even just the discussional answer was, hey, was the, I think the question was, hey, was this presented anywhere? And the answer was, yeah, once.
Yeah, no, it was, it's the, it's how. Much those words matter on the clarity, yeah, and but this line answers it without having to remember and counting, which is fantastic. And you've been updating it, so it's good.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna need to update this and have something, you know, even if it's not. Even though, you know, even if it's just literally, you pull it up and you say, we talked about this a bunch of times and then you flip through it, you know, but to your point. It's gonna be, I I don't know, someone's gonna have to put a stopwatch on me and do a practice run before town, the town meeting, because. Ten minutes for something this complicated, I mean, God bless you. I thought you guys did a great job on the uh, the. Stretch energy code, because that, but that's like the same thing, you can just fall down such a rabbit hole.
Well, that was all them, that that they did a great job, I sat in the back um. But whatever you think you need, Jim, just ask for another extra minutes and he won't know that, you know, because you can always. Give back time to the.
Well, a lot of that too is. Get out the high level information, point to that there's been many and then know that we're going to get a ton of questions.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So.
Yeah. That's that's the other strategy.
Yeah, the the unexpected was the attempt to not present. Because people felt uninformed, they're like, but they're gonna present it, so you won't be uninformed. I mean, that was a. Conversation that I don't think anyone foresaw, so.
Yeah, I I I noticed that and I was like, oh, I really hope that no one's gonna do that for the, for us, because that would be. Just get everything ready and then ha- before you even get a chance to speak. Be shut down and, you know, postpone indefinitely would have been a really unfortunate event.
Yeah, well. So that's public meanings, you know, and and town meaning is a specialist.
Yep, absolutely. So, okay, well, um, if anyone else, does anyone else have any other questions or comments that you want to have on the presentation?
Uh, if I think of it, I'll send it to you.
Okay, and then uh, any other items unanticipated by the chair? Okay, uh, hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Actually, is there a next meeting for us scheduled or what's the? Or is that to be determined?
Uh, I have to circle up with Aaron and figure that out, but um, we'll, I'm sure that we'll be doing another uh. Reach out, maybe the holidays coming up, I think it's gonna be uh. I don't think it's gonna be uh, as straightforward as just scheduling it and saying it's at this date. And also, on that, on that aside, thank you, everyone, Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, taking the time. I know it's not always necessarily easiest, so. Thank you for uh, for being accommodating.
Alright, I'll I'll motion to adjourn. I'll I'll.
I hear, I hear motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, uh, Greg?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So in that case, we are adjourned and thank you everyone for the time.